Mr. Chair, recording has begun.
Good evening. It is 6 o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order. First thing I'd, and we have everyone present physically. Thank you. First thing I'd like to do is ask Commissioner Sampson to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic with Japan's one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next thing I'd like to do is welcome to the town, our newest commissioner, Robert High. We'll call him Bob. Bob, anything you'd like to say?
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Madam Councilwoman. Been with the town, living in the town. I've played here for 21 years, looking for an opportunity to better serve the community. This would like a great opportunity and thanks to my now teammates. I'll be doing that and I'm really looking forward to the opportunity. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much for joining us. The first item on the agenda under matters of discussion is Hartford Street. You're absolutely correct. I missed it. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Thank you.
Chairman Gann.
Yes.
I move that we accept the June 6, 2023 Planning Commission meeting minutes as presented.
Do I have a second?
Chairman Gann has a second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Not hearing any. A show of hands, all in favor? And none opposed. Minutes passed unanimously. Thank you. Hartford Street. This is a special exception being requested. It would be our job as the Planning Commission to recommend to the Board of Appeals that this be considered. So the first thing we'll do is ask Director Harrington for the staff report.
All right. Good evening, Planning Commission members. So for this Hartford Street development special exception request, they are applying for a special exception to develop 4.99 acres in the R8 zoning district to allow for a senior living community in accordance with the Town Code, Section 191-10, Use Number 7, as subject to special provisions as stated in Chapter 191-52.h.28. So the project, the current property is undeveloped. Under the comprehensive plan designation, it is medium density residential. To the north is existing residential, which is R10 zoning. To the south is existing residential, and there's R8 and R3 zoning. To the east is existing residential, R8 zoning. And to the west is the proposed development Pine Grove, as well as the CSX train tracks. So the property is looking to get a special exception for the use of a senior living community for 20 dwelling units, and that would be duplex units, so 10 duplex units, but 20 dwelling units altogether. I think there's a little confusion in the memo that went out. And because it's zoned R8, a special exception is required. They do meet all of the minimum requirements under the Town Code chapter for the special exception. They do have approximately 100 feet of frontage on Hartford Street, and they do meet the minimum acreage requirement of 4.99 acres. And they've provided 20-foot front setbacks, 15-foot side setbacks, and I noted a, an error in my staff report that I'll need to fix, and 20-foot rear setbacks. An F buffer yard will be provided around the entire perimeter of the property, and residency and occupancy restrictions will be required prior to the issuance of the use and occupancy permits. If the special exception is approved, it would proceed to a major site plan review for water, sewer, stormwater management, forest conservation, and other zoning requirements. The Planning Commission's recommendation will be forwarded to the Board of Appeals, which is affirmatively scheduled for July 12th, which is next Wednesday at 7:00 PM. So as noted, there's a reference, and I see several edits. I have too much going on in my brain. I need to update the reference document for BOA-000647-2023 for their supplemental documents and their site plan. So per the special exception requirements, do they have access to a collector arterial or primary local street? The answer is yes. The tract is not less than four acres of land under single ownership or unified control. That is correct. They have at least 100 feet of frontage, as required by the code. They are providing the appropriate side and rear yard setbacks. They have, they meet the minimum or maximum overall density, not to exceed 15 dwelling units per acre. They meet all the dimensional requirements under Table 20. They are providing the F buffer yard. As, as noted, the deed restrictions will be required prior to occupancy. So staff is recommending approval for the construction of the senior living community, as detailed in the planning staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you should have of staff, and we also have the applicants and their representatives should you have any questions of them.
Good evening. My name is Ed Van Arsdale. I'm project manager with Arrow. I believe the director summed up everything very nicely. Can't really say anything more than that, but we're here to happy, happy to entertain any questions that the members of the commission have.
Yes. Good afternoon. I had four questions. I think I know the answers to them based on the information provided, but I just want a clarification.
Sure.
To make sure I'm tracking this correctly. So when I looked at the map, the tax maps, and I saw in parcel three, this is a, I'm using the one from a tax map 190. All right. The portion of the map for parcel three, I just want to be clear, that property is already owned by you? Is that correct, parcel three?
Yes.
Okay. Then.
Allow me to interject. Parcel three is address 40. Do you recall? The reason why I asked that question is, it's, I think it's a segue to one of the ones that I had. You had indicated 100 feet of frontal property, and I think the document said the address was 400, but it looked like 40, I guess, 4 or 6 would have been, had no home on it. So I just want to make sure that, I don't know if you are able to show us a picture of, of which property it is and how it happens to have 100 feet.
I'll have a full set of the plans with me unless they're available digitally, but.
Kelly, would you be able to pull up the site plan?
Ma'am, just one second.
It looks like the dimension across the frontage of that lot, as I'm looking at the, or maybe that's the entire 287, but, or 298.
So at the bottom of that drawing, there's 100 feet?
Yes, 100.28 feet.
Okay.
Just there.
Back to you, Commissioner Sampson. Thank you.
Okay. My next question, I think is fairly obvious, but I wanted to ask it anyway. On the table that shows the parameters of the property, I noticed that it did not have the width of the property. I'm assuming that's because of the amount of acreage that you're already showing. Is that correct?
That and the odd shape of the lot, really, because it's not a uniform lot, so it's really hard to nail down the, the width. Did you see it kind of, as many angles and deflections within the larger portion of the property? It's.
Okay. My last two questions. On page 54 of the supporting documentation, so I'm using that link. Okay, it's page 60, if you have the whole packet agenda for individuals to follow. Are the individuals in paragraph B4 exempt from the 55-year-old requirement such as those stated in B2?
You'll have to forgive me. I'm not exactly sure. I'm picking this up from a coworker who's unable to attend, but.
Is, is that a reference to the section of code that talks about the residency requirements?
Yes, it's, um, like I said, if you're looking at it from the, if you go to the link that says supporting documentation, it's on page 58. If you look at the whole agenda package, page 60. But it reads the requirement on B2, I'll just read it at the same time. It says, "The spouse of a senior person, even if such spouse is less than 55 years of age, as long as they remain married and living together in the senior living community." And it goes on, it just says that, you know, if the spouse is less than 55, they can stay in the residence with the individual. But when I go down to B4, it doesn't state any age requirement, but it reads, "A maximum of two adults, related or unrelated by blood or marriage to a senior person, and providing ancillary supportive services, supervision, personal health assistance." So basically, the rest of the paragraph just reads that they're providing assisted living, but it does not state an age requirement. So it just says basically, as long as they're providing service. So I wanted to know, are, if they are providing that service, are they then exempt from residing in that facility based on the age requirement of 55?
I believe that this is all in accordance with the town's code. So if there is a person that is providing care, they would not necessarily be, first of all, they would not be an owner, most likely, although they could be, you know, even a parent of, or a brother or sister. But generally speaking, when we're at the 55 and up age, that person, if it was a family person, would be in that same range. I do not believe that they would necessarily have the, I guess it depends on how the deed would read, but they are still subject to the code. And the fact that it is a 55 and up community, we're required to provide or to sell only to 55 people who meet the requirements. I don't know that I actually said that.
That language is in the residency and occupancy restrictions. That is what needs to be contained within the actual deed restrictions and then it's directly out of the town code.
So a person that's under 55 but providing assisted living service can reside there?
Yes.
As long as they're doing that?
Yeah.
Okay.
They're not owners.
Okay. And then the last question I had was in the same section. And it's paragraph C. And I'll just read it at the same time. It says, "As long as the spouse of a senior person is less than 55 years of age, the spouse may not continue to reside or occupy dwelling in a senior living community for more than one year after the senior person or spouse cease living together as a couple." So the only thing I could think of, if I'm understanding this correctly, is that if two people move in, the spouse is less than 55, and say they got divorced, that ex-spouse could stay there for a year. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that applies to that situation. Is there any other situation that you can name where that would apply?
Or a death.
Yeah, death.
Okay.
But it assumes, I mean, that's out of the code as well, and that assumes that you have a year to make other kinds of living arrangements.
Okay.
Or term 55.
Okay, that answered my questions. Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? Well, I have a few, and thank you for stealing some of your thunder. In, in the application on page two, this is a nit, but it identifies the agent, but not the state, not the city and the, and the address of the agent. And I looked you up. You're not La Plata, right? You're Frederick?
Well, we are the builders and the owners are of the area, but.
Yes, the, the, our Frederick office is the one that is handling this.
Okay, so the application doesn't show that.
Yes, I see where you're at, and that seems to be just missing.
So, just so everyone's aware, I don't read all the words in the deeds, but for some reason I did a lot of reading on this one. And on page 40, Libra 92, page 371.
We've read it.
Pardon me?
I think we've read it.
There's some very disturbing language there. Are we legally bound to that now?
No, because actually, I believe that everything else undoes that. Is that what we were talking about? Yes.
And the times. I mean,
Yeah.
I can't imagine a document legally being signed at this day and age.
Yeah.
I agree. In fact, we had this conversation just yesterday. And, you know, I was concerned about it as well and said, you know, is there anything that we have to do? Do we have to, you know, do something to undo that language specifically? And I, I'm not sure of what those regulations are, how to do that, but if, you know, if that needs to be done, we will certainly take care of it.
Because. Thank you.
We agree with you.
Hey, this next question kind of goes back.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. What, I didn't get your names.
Stu Davis, Lisa Holmes, sorry, and Mike McCook.
Thank you.
Um, this is kind of going back to the earlier question that Commissioner Sampson brought up. On page 45, you talk about an easement to the property from 400 Hartford. The map showed access, I think it was 404 to probably 404. Can you help me understand this easement?
I can. The, that particular lot originally had the easement to go into that property, and that easement was designated as a street or an extension of, I guess, I don't even know what the name of that road is that goes into it, but.
Kent Avenue.
It was Kent. So it was supposed to be an extension. However, since the time that that easement was created, the house was built there, and then there was an addition put on the house. So the easement is just 40 feet, and that house comes right up to the 40-foot lot. So we felt that that would be, that that would interfere with the people who own that. It would also create a very crowded scenario. So we opted to put the entrance at the other side on the other lot that we purchased. And we're going to use that easement for public utilities instead, so that it does not affect any of the owners there.
Okay. So to be clear, I read the document saying the easement would be used for traffic, but traffic would be used at the 404 site. Utilities and other things would be used at the 400.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Now, this is a question for Director Harrington. When, when you talk about they're asking for a special exception, you cited the paragraph that in my mind, in my reading, is the process of special exception. When, when I look at the R8 situation, it seems to me they meet the requirements of R8. So I'm a little puzzled on why we're asking for a special exception.
They, so under the R8 zoning, by right, you're only allowed to have single-family dwellings.
Oh, it's because the duplex.
And then they do want it to be senior living, because they want that 55 and older. It's the combination of the 55 and older and the duplex that kicks into the special exception requirement.
Thank you. Thank you. Those are all the questions or comments that I had. Any others from the commissioners? Okay, not hearing any. We're at this point now where we can vote on whether to recommend this to go to the Board of Appeals. Do I hear a motion?
Chairman Gann?
Yes.
I move that we recommend to the Board of Appeals approval to allow for the construction of a senior living community as shown in detail in the Planning Commission staff report.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Is there any discussion? Okay, by show of hands, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All are in favor. Passes unanimously. Good luck next Wednesday, right, 12?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Next item on the agenda is planning commission business. The, at the last meeting, we saw an initial draft on the rules and procedures. I don't know if Commissioner Highs had a chance to see it yet, so you're a little behind us, but.
I reviewed it by any time.
Okay, cool. So I'd like to propose we go through it page by page, unless, Director Harrington, you have anything to say first?
No, I think it's a good idea. Like I said, I've, I've received everyone's comments, and I had the intention of trying to compile them today, but that didn't happen. I got caught up in meetings and permits and.
Yeah. I apologize for that. I got my comments to you.
So, but I do have all of them, and I think it would be good to kind of go through each page and, and point out the commentary and see what changes need to be made.
Okay, any comments on page one?
So I did see, Dawn, you circled under section two, number six, procedural defects or errors, and a question mark.
Where, what, you're on page one?
Yep. Page one, section two, number six.
All six, okay. Who had a comment?
I did. I had a question. I wasn't clear, perhaps, what the definition, how we were defining defects and errors. Did we?
May I, may I offer an example? So later on, I have a comment within his own document where a section is cited with the capital A, but the section cited actually shows a, a small a. I, I would think that'd be kind of thing in there. It's just minor stuff, typos, and things that are not in disagreement with any procedure or ordinance that we have.
So basically typographical errors along that line, minor grammatical errors. Okay.
I didn't want to put words into your mouth, Director Harrington. I think that's okay.
Exactly. Like my, my staff report's a very good example. I need to make sure.
So I won't cite that example later, right?
Yes.
Anything else on page one?
Don't think I have anything else for page one.
Okay, page two. So I had a comment on section five. I felt it was redundant to two and three, so it didn't need to be, the first sentence didn't need to be stated.
And Dawn, you had that same, same comment. So I'll make sure to go through and reduce any of the repetitiveness within those, because you both had the same, the same point.
Anything else on page two?
I did on, under six, I, I felt that A and C were repetitive. Or did I mean B and C? I think I meant A and C. When you talk about the alternate?
Mm-hmm. I'm not sure. I see redundancy there. The way I read this is, the first paragraph indicates when an alternate can serve as a full commissioner, and that would be in the absence of a full commissioner. The second one indicates to me, the way I read it, that the previous item on today's agenda, we require a vote. And if we had an alternate here tonight, that alternate would not be, be able to vote because we had a full contingent of regular commissioners. We're now talking about items that don't necessarily go to a vote. We're actually talking about planning commission procedural errors. And the way I read this paragraph, the alternate would be able to fully participate in that discussion.
Yeah, regulatory.
So, so again, I read this some weeks ago, so I apologize. I'm trying to,
No problem.
Trying to refresh my memory on the fly, and, and my notes are somewhat cryptic. So perhaps what I meant was B and C were repetitive, and I, and I underlined under B, when it talked about the regulatory matters as it relates to the alternate, and then C also talks about the regulatory matters and the alternates ability to participate. So perhaps that's where I was talking with respect to repetitive.
I think B and C still are separate. I mean, clearly states that, you know, that he can participate in the conversation as long as it's not a regulatory matter, and then it, it defines a regulatory matter. Then C states he should not participate, he or she should not participate in regulatory matters when it's a full complement.
And that doesn't appear to be.
Because I think, I think B is, is saying that he can participate in a, he or she can participate in the full conversation as long as it's not regulatory.
Right.
It finds regulatory, then at the bottom it states to separate it out when it's a full panel. He cannot participate, he or she cannot participate in regulatory matters.
So perhaps.
Perhaps the fact, I apologize. Go ahead.
No, no, no.
I interrupted, Councilman.
I interrupted. You go ahead.
No, I want her to continue her thought.
Yeah, so I think C states that when it's a full, when he shall not participate. B states when he or she can participate and defines regulatory, because it says in non-regulatory matters.
I mean, we could simplify it a bit and have a, the alternate planning commissioner shall serve in these situations, and the, and the next one shall be the planning commissioner shall, alternate shall not participate.
That's what you can, B and C does.
And then define.
We could probably have two categories, though. We could probably break it down a little bit just to say, like, A and B, and A is they can participate in these activities, they cannot participate in these activities.
And, and when you talk about the, the regulatory, say, and C, then you define what the regulatory activities would be.
See, I can.
So I think it goes, they would just be flipping the words, and it'll still be the same.
It will, but like I said, it, it might be a little bit more clear just to say, like, these are the things that they can participate in, these are the things they cannot.
We'll take a look at it and see.
Yeah.
How we can simplify.
Absolutely.
Yeah, along those lines, I see what might have led to the confusion is the first sentence talks about non-regulatory, the second sentence talks about regulatory, third sentence talks about non-regulatory.
Yeah.
So your approach that you're proposing might.
Like I said, it might simplify things a little bit. And this will, once we're done with the planning commission review, this will go back to the town attorney, so he can verify that we didn't, you know, say anything that we shouldn't say. But I, I think we can certainly simplify that, so it's not as confusing.
Any other comments on page two?
Is everyone's microphone on?
I don't.
Only when I'm speaking.
Are we supposed to have them off?
No.
Oh, okay.
Um, yours might be off. Go.
There it is.
I think actually, I don't know, that was on the second. That was on another page.
So I don't, perhaps the paragraph directly under section four is more of an introductory paragraph, and then the, the next preceding paragraph goes into. And then the, the next preceding paragraph goes into a little bit more detail in terms of the meeting.
Yes, and, and I definitely do mean planning commission.
Yeah, you had, I circled town council.
So, yeah, and there may be some instances where it has town council accidentally because I was using the councils.
I assumed.
Yeah, planning, or rules and procedures as a sample. So yeah, I see where you're, where you're coming at with that. I think that that can be reduced.
Any other comments on page two? About page three, continuing on page three. So in section four, I have to admit, I feel strongly about this. If a member chooses to recuse him or herself from the meeting, I would like this document to include that that must occur before the discussion from which that person is being recused.
Section four?
Section five.
At the end of section four, it says members shall recuse him or herself if the activities in which they're engaged present a conflict of interest.
It's section five, number four.
Bullet four.
Thank you for that clarification. Correct. Section five, bullet four, last sentence.
And I absolutely agree.
Okay.
Yes, having that clarification.
Anything else on page three? Okay, page four. I should know the answer to this question. Who is Joseph Griffiths?
Joseph Griffiths is the, he's with the Maryland Department of Planning.
Oh, okay.
And so he was the.
Probably spoken to him before, right?
That means you haven't attended any planning commission meetings. Shame on you.
Or my Alzheimer's is kicking.
Nope.
Yes, he, he was actually the first one I talked to when I, when we kind of discussed creating planning commission rules, procedures. And he pointed me to the Maryland Department of Planning's website and they actually have samples.
Yes.
And, and so I was using those samples to start with. And then, like I said, I realized that we had town council rules and procedures and then I wanted to make sure that it was consistent with the council and so it's kind of a mishmash of things. But so, yeah, so a lot of those comments were originally from him. Some of them have already been addressed, some of them were just questions that I wanted the town attorney to answer, but yes, he's with the Maryland Department of Planning.
Well, I appreciate the review that he has done.
So, Mike, you highlighted number two and number three.
Yeah. Reading my comments, this is confusing to me if a new item is proposed for the meeting and the commission accepts it to be added to that meeting agenda. It sounds like that it has to wait till the next regular meeting to be conduct, discussed. So let's say for tonight's meeting.
Right.
Or in section six.
Okay.
Paragraphs two and three.
Okay.
Well, paragraph two says agenda items once acted upon must wait until the next regular meeting for consideration. What does that mean?
That's from a town council, isn't it?
I think it just needs to be deleted.
Yeah, this, this.
Yeah, I mean, if, for example,
Yeah.
If there was a real good reason to add an agenda, an agenda item to the meeting, at the beginning of the meeting, we should have agreed upon adding that. And then I think we should discuss it in the meeting if we agree to add.
Right.
Okay. Same section six, paragraph three, that paragraph reads to me as a description of the process within your department.
Yeah.
The planning commission.
Yeah, I think that that can be removed.
Anything else on page four? Page five. In section, where are you now?
This is section seven.
Bullet one, third line says subject to cancellation of proposing adding the words or rescheduling. On page five, I just wanted to make sure I was clear.
Excuse me. You're saying add subject to cancellation or rescheduling based on holidays or the lack of agenda items?
So we are to hold meetings once a month on the first Tuesday of the month. That is subject to cancellation because of the lack of agenda would be a reason to cancel it.
Right.
But it's also subject to rescheduling.
August.
Pardon me?
As with August for National Night Out.
Right.
And today.
And today. Yeah.
Okay.
So we rescheduled it based on a holiday.
Know where you want to put it.
Oh. I'd say subject to cancellation or reschedule. If that, the words right there. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay.
Now.
But also makes me, while we're talking about it, it also makes me want to verify that we, well, when we get down to it, that we've picked another date for, I think we did. They're picking a date for the August meeting.
Yeah, I think we did.
I think we did too.
It's a good thing to confirm.
And I saw, Dawn, in your comments that you repeat section four, and yes, there is some repetitiveness about holding meetings once a month, so I do need to go through and make sure that I remove any repetitive language, because it, we do say we'll hold meetings once a month, a couple of times, so that's something to go back through and just double check that I, you know, remove any of those.
And I'm wondering, Janine, thank you for that, I'm wondering if we can't just collapse section seven under section four. And, or the reverse, because they all, they both deal with how the commission meets and conducts their business.
Adoption of the annual calendar and meeting schedule and then meetings.
So they, they are separate, but like I said, there, there is a lot of overlap that needs to be pushed one way or the other. So section four is basically stating that we're going to have what our meeting schedule is, so that would be the generally the planning commission will hold meetings once a month, so that number one should be in four. And that we, you know, shall adopt the schedule annually, those types of things. Number seven is supposed to be how a meeting is handled.
But if you look also under section four, the next paragraph, regular meetings and public hearings, we talk about virtual participation, which we talk about in section seven as well.
Yeah, like I said, I definitely need to take out any repetitiveness.
And then my other note with respect to that is we talk virtual one minute, we talk electronic the next minute.
Standard.
They're the same things. I think virtual would encompass electronic. That way you're talking about telephone, you're talking about video, you're talking about all their electronic means for participating.
So keeping the language consistent?
Yes.
I couldn't hear you, Director.
Oh, sorry, keeping the language consistent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think I'm hearing Commissioner Banks recommend the word virtual could cover whatever you used, electronic.
I, I'll leave with Mr. Banks' comment. I agree that four and seven are really, really closely, like you could almost take that first paragraph out of section four and make that paragraph seven or move it to four, because that, that's sort of chapeau language, if you will, hey, here's when we're going to have meetings. Then you kind of get into the process, I think that's a nice flow. Thank you.
So on page five, this is section seven, bullet three, bullet C. In the second sentence, if the conditions and requirements of this policy have been met, the planning commission shall approve the members' request by majority vote. So since you're using the town council procedures as a process, I'm going to ask, is this how it's done, the town council? The way I'm reading this paragraph is if we have a member, a commissioner, who is going to participate remotely, we have to vote on allowing that? We have not been doing that.
That is correct. So the idea was moving back into in-person meetings from what we were doing virtually. We were having issues earlier on where we had only one planning commission member in the town hall and the rest were virtual. So trying to figure out, and I guess that's where I pulled this from, was the council. So having, you know, if somebody needs to, if they're on vacation or if they're, you know, ill or hurt their foot and they need to participate virtually, having some mechanism to say, okay, you can, you can join virtually since you're not able to.
I understand that logic. So as the current chair, I would ask for some kind of reminder in the agenda that at the beginning, when we're deciding whether or not we have a quorum, if that quorum was being made up of a person who is participating virtually, we need to vote on that if this survives in its current writing.
So can the member not contact the chair for approval to participate virtually and then at the start of the meeting, the chairperson announces that so-and-so will be joining virtually?
Yeah, I, I think we could definitely do that instead of having it so formal.
Yeah, that's, any, any opposition to that?
No, but I think if I understand what everyone is saying, goes into the comment that I have on page five, paragraph three A, where it says that we have to go to the town clerk to request to go to schedule electronic means. And so the question I had was, is that the appropriate channel?
A, last sentence.
So that's where I would, I might say replace town clerk with chairperson.
And the chair will notify the town clerk so that they, we expect them, because they would have to let them in and give them permission to have access.
Any other comments on page five? Oops, I have. Four C, the word warranted, if warranted. The only time I think it would be warranted is if it's a public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on page five?
Yeah, I didn't get a chance to review this, just on the very last sentence on page five, getting back to your earlier discussion about the alternate member voting or not, is this, is this conflict with anything?
No.
Full voting rights, no.
But it might go to the director's comment about some repetition.
Moving it to the other paragraph. Which is a better sentence and.
Yeah.
Anything else on page five? Page six. Page seven.
I had a question on page seven. And then it may just be that I'm unfamiliar with the procedure, but based on the way I read a paragraph seven, seven B, that paragraph allows anybody to speak on a issue, whether they're a town resident, county resident or whatever, and they're not representing any particular group or individual. Is that correct? So if I just felt strongly about something, I could show up at night, you know, if I had a cause or whatever, and we as a commission just happen to be talking about whatever it is, they could show up and actually talk, even though they're not representing anybody or any group or any individual. Is that correct?
So this is public hearing procedures. So that is correct. Public, when you have a public hearing, anybody that feels that they are affected or, you know, have something to say about the particular agenda item can come in. And I do recall having a, a discussion about removing the address. So each speaker at a hearing shall state name and address, but I think it should just be whether state name and whether you're in the incorporated town or not.
Would that, I understand what you're saying, but would that then be relevant? Because it's open to everybody, anybody can speak, does it matter?
I think paragraph A above that might help, but the last sentence gives the chair the opportunity to facilitate orderly discussion, blah, 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 blah. So if a person comes in and we're talking about you know, some huge development that's going in, and a person comes in here and decides to want to talk about boats on the lake that have nothing to do with it, I think the chair would have the right to say that that's not really germane to the subject for purposes of this meeting. Could we ask you to withhold those comments? Does that make sense?
I, I agree with you. I was just thinking of, for example, if I'm very big on, and I agree with your comments, I don't, but I was thinking more along the lines, just so you do what I'm thinking, say I'm a very big on environmentalism. And let's say I'm out of Western Maryland or whatever. And we're doing something that has to do with a water issue. Well, they could come down here and speak and say, this is what's best for the town, this is what we should be listening to, this should be entered into evidence, and we're asking. So I was thinking, just so you know what I was thinking, that was more along.
We had that with Steeplechase, someone who no longer lived in the town, no longer lived in La Plata, but grew up here years and years ago, came to speak about against the phase three.
Yeah, and there are some instances where someone may not live within the municipal boundaries, but they're going to be affected by traffic or they're going to be affected by, you know, sights and smells and sounds and those types of things that they may, hey, say, hey, like this is going to affect me. And they want to make their state, you know, make their statement. So I think with the council is just state your name and whether you're in the incorporated town or not. And that just helps us to kind of base, you know, our comments off of.
Yeah, so you raise up a really good example. I mean, if we're talking about a project that clearly could have environmental impacts and someone from another jurisdiction comes in and expresses an opinion about it, I'm thinking we might want to hear that, whether they're.
Well, we hear everything, we just don't respond. We don't have conversations with them. They are able to say whatever they want and walk away at, at the end of their three minutes.
Yeah, they could say, you know, I live in a similar, you know, municipality and this happened to us and this is what the outcome was, and you could say, hmm, that's a good point. So yeah, it's, it's allowing, anyone is allowed to speak.
Yeah.
And if I go back to my earlier example where the person is making a comment that has nothing to do with what we're talking about, you know, then I could use some examples like, well, do you live in this area? Do you not live in this area? How is this impacting you?
But we don't engage them.
But yeah, at the risk of having, we, we can engage, this doesn't prevent it and we don't want to for the sake of time.
Yeah.
But if I'm going to, as the chair, if I'm going to effectively shut somebody down, I'd like to at least honor their, their understanding of why they believe they should be speaking to us. You have a question mark on your face.
Really don't, I think that from all I understand, we are not to engage them. They, they, it's public comment, they are allowed to say what they came to say. We hear them and they move on. You don't engage them, that's going to become, it makes us look like we're combative or confrontational, let them say what they have to say. I mean, we had it at the Steeplechase thing and the other one. Hawthorne.
Hawthorne Yards is a hub, both of them.
Yeah, and they came and they, people were not living here, people lived in DC. And we didn't, you know, engage them, we allowed them to say what they needed to say and sit down. I, I don't think that we are to address a comment in any way because that prolongs their time and it makes them feel like we weren't really trying to hear them.
Well, then, is there a need for that last sentence in seven A?
Well, that allows you to, to cut someone off.
Yeah.
I have one time in my.
That does allow you to say, you know, I've set a three-minute, you know, maximum, you have exceeded that, thank you for your comment, next. So that's what gives you the ability to kind of, you know, keep the orderly testimony going.
Yeah.
Giving your coaching. That's why she, they put her next to me. Any other comments on that section?
You'll be here talking all night.
Now, it's good discussion. Okay, anything else on page seven?
C?
Page eight.
On page eight, I just, maybe just the way I'm reading it, I just thought we should have added the word not to that portion of paragraph nine, or I say, section nine, paragraph two, where a set of preponderance of evidence means that the evidence, when considered and compared with those opposed to it, shows it more likely, right now it says than that, the applicant's request. And I think it, what I read better is shows more likely than not.
Yes. Yes, I agree.
So, I had a comment in that paragraph too. Having heard Commissioner Sampson, I'm wondering on the words evenly balanced. I mean, the preponderance sentence that you just talked about helps us understand that if it's pretty obvious to us, all the evidence is in this direction, you know, then we, we have a clear action. The words evenly balanced seem to be, you know, what I think is evenly balanced, Commissioner Banks might not think is evenly balanced. So.
It's very subjective.
I think that because as I've, I've said many, many times.
Can we just look at that second paragraph?
That, I, I was going to say, I think that, I mean, we, they do need to provide proof that they are meeting all the requirements. But I think it should basically state that the planning commission finds that they are in compliance with all of the, the, you know, all the findings within the code. Something along those lines.
I think you're on the right track there because the way I read this last sentence is that if the evidence is balanced, then we should deny their request.
Right.
But if they've indeed, and I think I'm going to paraphrase what you've said many times. If they indeed have met the town code and the comprehensive plan, whether it's evenly balanced or not, we should grant them the okay.
Right.
Right, okay.
And I have concerns with the language burden of proof, preponderance of evidence. That seems very legal.
It's legal, it's definitely legal.
We're not a legal authority. We're more of a.
Lawyer looking at it again.
Yeah, no, I agree. I'm definitely going to look at that entire paragraph and, and rewrite that. Because it is, like I said, some of it was probably taken from the council. Some of it was probably taken from Frederick County or whichever other county I looked at.
Very line order-ish.
Yes, it is. And I, I definitely want it to be easy to understand. So, and I, I agree with you. There is a lot of big words there.
It's just subject, subjective.
Preponderance.
Yeah.
Just sounds strange amongst us.
Yes. So, I will take a look at that entire paragraph and try to reword it to basically say that either they're in compliance with the code or not. They have to provide the burden of proof. If they meet the requirements, it, it's proved. If they don't, or if there's no reasonable doubt, we don't have water, you know, then there's a reason to deny. So, I can simplify that.
Which might get.
Saying reasonable doubt, burden of proof.
That's the, the, up, up above, it says burden of proof.
I guess the burden of proof would be if they met the town code.
Right. Yeah, I guess that I'm going to, I'm going to rewrite it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In compliance with.
Yes.
Something.
In accordance with the code, in accordance with the code. Yeah. So, I'll definitely look at those, that, that section and make sure that it's a little bit more straightforward.
Okay. On that same page four, Bravo, planning staff may annually submit. Why have you chosen to put the word may in there? I think you've been doing that. I think it's a good practice.
Yes. Staff will.
But then you might resist the word should or shall?
Shall. Yeah, we can put in.
Any other comments on page eight? Page nine. In section 10, the first sentence, any planning commission decision shall be made by a majority, and I would propose inserting the words of voting members. Present.
No problem.
It probably somewhere got of a quorum. We had a quorum of three commissioners and one altered it in the room.
And because.
Maybe, maybe it is unnecessary.
Right.
Okay.
Because.
You were thinking out loud.
I was going to say, I don't. I'm like, I'll see you after the meeting.
I, in section 11, paragraph one, where it talks about no later than seven days, and I saw similar comments from Mr. Griffiths. Is this in conflict with four E above, which talks about 15 days to appeal?
Probably.
And then there's language about appeal and request for reconsideration.
Yeah, I'll definitely have to double check dates.
Okay. And then section 12 below also makes reference to.
Okay. Yeah, I'll definitely go back and double check timeframes and dates.
Anything else on page nine?
Are appeals and reconsiderations the same thing? Aren't they two separate things?
No. So, if someone were, if the, if there's a reconsideration, that's not.
So, the initial action is to appeal and then, then there's a reconsideration?
I would think it might be the other way around.
Yeah.
Let's say they left the meeting after a decision that we made and realized that maybe we were in error. It might be a step to have us reconsider that before going to appeal.
Right. Because the appeal would be to the Board of Appeals. So, the planning commission could reconsider something, but then if they want to appeal, that would go to the Board of Appeals.
So, appeals to the commission under eight is a misstatement?
Ah.
Yeah.
What you're saying is an appeal to the commission is actually a reconsideration.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you for.
Where are you?
Right here.
Really?
I am on section nine, E, four E, and then section 10. I mean, section 11. Nine, four E, where it says appeal, and then section 11, where it talks about reconsideration.
Nine, four, E.
Yes, I'll definitely have to make sure to go back through and ensure that if there's any language of appeal or reconsideration that it's appropriate.
So, along those lines then, in paragraph four on 10, just before section 12, the planning commission, that so long as the planning commission holds a regular meeting within 14 days after the decision, which is subject to reconsideration. Well, if we hold our meetings monthly, let's say they get back to you in seven days. That means we're going to have to have a special meeting.
Yeah, that definitely needs to be looked at.
And I would also propose that, let's say we had such a meeting and we went through the discussion of reconsideration, that restarts the clock for an appeal.
I think generally in the, in the code, it says that you'd be the next available meeting date. And you would be able to create a new meeting if you needed to, or it could go to the next meeting date. So, I think we should cut back any of that and say the next available meeting.
What you just said, I think was very good.
Keep it to simple.
Anything else on page 10? Page 11. Page 12, the only comment I had there is when it comes time to sign it, but I have a place for a date. And I guess if this is an official document, I guess I should have my signature name there rather than Mike.
Yeah, so it'd be.
Michael Che, Ken the third.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Don't call me Michael Che, Ken the third. Only my mother does.
And beloved one speaker. Jay.
All right.
Okay, any other comments on the document? So, next steps?
So, next steps, I am going to take all of the commentary that has been provided. I will revise and I will bring this back to our next meeting. So, we can have a fresh start. And then we'll have another round. And then if we're good from there, then I'll send it off to the town attorney to do a final check through. If he's good with it, then I'll bring it back for signature and signage.
So, this is a document that we can take care of ourselves with the guidance of the attorney. The town council doesn't have to approve it.
Correct.
Okay.
I just asked that you remove all of the legalese.
Yes, I will, I'll put in big bold letters, remove.
Ask an attorney to remove.
And remove the legal language.
Yeah.
Okay, next item on the agenda is planning department project updates, correct?
Yes. And Kelly, would you be able to pull up my PowerPoint? Because I, I don't remember what I put on there. We've got a lot going on. Maybe no one's home. Where is our meeting agendas? Okay. So, for the planning commission updates, we have, as you noted, we're working on our planning commission rules procedures. We have several sections of town code that are currently being worked on. The adequate public facilities ordinance is with the town attorney to kind of get some more guidance. I've hit a wall as far as my knowledge is concerned with adequate public facilities. So, I'm looking for some guidance and input from the town attorney and town manager to continue working on that.
Is that going to become its own chapter?
Yes. We're also working on kind of top, this kind of in the order that I'm working on these. Chapter 181, we have some active issues with parking around the town. So, we're trying to make sure that that's updated to, for the parking, its vehicles and traffic. And that ties into art of chapter one, article three, the municipal infraction process. So, currently throughout the code, every single chapter and every single section has a a subsection of code enforcement violations. And it's very repetitive. And if we change anything, then half of the code is out of date. So, moving forward, chapter one, article three is going to be the code enforcement process. Any municipal infraction, how the code enforcement process works, that's where it's going to be. And then any chapter or section will just reference chapter one, article, article three. So, I'm updating that, both of those.
Do we get to review the, in the past, we've looked at the changes that you were making as you went along. Do we get to do that or no?
The town council does for these chapters. So, the planning commission by legally only looks at chapter 191.
Ninety-one, okay.
And chapter 173, not even chapter 173 legally, but I know I bring chapter 173 to you since it's the subdivision regulations. But I think legally, the planning commission only has authority over the zoning code, so chapter 191. Everything else would be under the purview of the town council.
We looked at 181 for whatever reason.
Comprehensive plan.
Okay.
Wondered that.
Yeah.
A lot.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I, I know we went through that.
So, and there are a few things that I'll definitely bring to the, the planning commission, like the chapter 170, streets and sidewalks. It's important that you guys see that because it plays into the role of the planning commission and reviewing development. But like I said, legally, it's the council's purview to review and approve that. We're working through our municipality software upgrade. We just finished phase three, so now we're moving into phase four with the development of that. So, hopefully by the end of the year, we'll have that up and running. And then after that, we'll have a public portal open for the public to be able to do submissions and to pay their permits and their site plan fees and those types of things via credit card online. We're working on several maps. I've just been delayed with being short-staffed and having a lot on our, our to-do list. We haven't gotten a chance to work on those since they're a little bit time consuming.
Needs to be done with the ward map update.
Uh, so because.
Boundaries?
Because we've done annexations and the town boundary has changed, we have to update our ward maps.
Oh, okay. But it's not, there's no issue with the delineation between the, the wards. It's just that pieces of the wards are growing.
It will have to be, so it's based off of population. So, the, it's, it's actually a more complicated process than you would think.
Not really the cross of.
No.
One and six.
No. And that's why if you actually look at our ward map, it is, it doesn't follow those lines exactly. They're off a little bit. Like, half of Pine Grove is in ward one and half of it's in ward four. Over to Oak Avenue is in ward three. So, yeah, it's definitely not even, and it's based off of population and it goes through a whole process. So, we're first trying to figure out what that process is. I know Kelly's been looking into that. But it involves the board of elections, I believe, and getting census data and population estimates.
Population when?
Yeah.
At the census? Because I could see all of a sudden, not all of a sudden, but over time with Pine Grove, a shift.
Yeah. So, again, we need to figure out how that works exactly and what that process is.
That education.
Yeah. Still working with the state highway on Charles Street. I don't think I've seen any updates. I also haven't really gone to their website to see if they've updated anything in a while.
The other day and it didn't seem to have anything more.
So, we're definitely still waiting on updated documentation. I do see that they have the document for the public meeting, May, June, or in May 17th. So, they may have added something, but they still have a lot to, to add to that. So, once I have any significant updates for you, I'll bring that back. But that's really all I have unless you have any specific questions for me.
Any questions for the director? Okay. Councilperson, Brian Ward, town council.
So, we just came back from MML, our summer conference, and it was wonderful. And our very own director Harrington did a presentation on annexation and she was fabulous.
And that was today?
No, June 24th through the 26th.
I thought your email said something, that you were going to be involved, something like that today.
No.
Okay.
No. And, and it was really wonderful. Governor Westmore came and delivered the closing address and we had 27 cabinet members to come and share about their different departments and council members, mayors, everybody got to go around and talk to them and ask them different questions about things. And they were very warm and receptive. It was a really, really, probably the best conference I've ever attended. Lots of information. We got to hear legislative updates. LARs were presented for the, to be voted on at the first legislative session. It was a good meeting. You did a great job, a great job. Annexations couldn't have been clearer. I just think you, your presentation was awesome.
Thank you. Yeah, that was with Geographs. And we did have a representative from Charles County join us and just kind of talk about how the county works with annexations and how we can improve our process.
And how we can work better together.
Yes. I don't remember much of it. I think I was too nervous.
Well, you did great. You didn't appear nervous at all. You appeared to be very in control. So, it was.
Autopilot comes in handy.
Any other council update?
None, that's it.
Any questions for the council? Any questions for the council person? Is there anything else to be brought up for the good of the meeting? I hear a motion for adjournment. I'll make a motion with adjourn.
I'll take it.
Thank you very much. Question.